All right, we're gonna call a meeting to order and if you have a chance, if you haven't had a chance to read the minutes yet, please do so and then I'd be looking for a motion. How you doing, yeah?
Good.
You're not gonna pick on Yoli anymore?
That's right. It's each of them.
Only if you can stall his pockets while.
We're just reading the minutes and doing that at this point.
Yeah, are we gonna be signing any, um, anything for the Monarch Millers tonight?
I don't know, I have the same time.
No. No, okay.
Are there a motion anywhere?
A motion to accept.
Second?
I'll second.
Comments, questions, concerns? All of those are there? All right, since we don't have our speakers here, um, I think what we're going to do is jump to the old business, which would then be, um, talking about the garage on Stone Wall Drive, Jason Roy.
Can I just pop one quick thing in a minute?
Yes, go ahead.
Just looks like on both, um, the easier one to look at is I under the conditions.
Yep.
Just if we could add, uh, it says eleven acres to be replanted, reseeded with native species of trees, can we add of trees in there?
Of trees, yes.
Yeah, and on the front as well.
Yes.
Um, the same thing.
In the actual motion?
Of trees.
All right, since we've made a correction, let's go back and re-vote then. Um, is there a motion to sec- accept the minutes as corrected or as changed?
To make a motion to accept as corrected.
Second?
Second.
Questions, any more concerns? All right, all on the favor? Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, as I remember from two weeks ago, Jason was, um, tasked with getting us a contour map so that we had a sense of the, the hill behind the garage and, uh, things like that, and I believe that's what I am looking at. Well, this is the first time I've seen it.
Yeah, so there's the existing garage, this is the paved area, that's the existing house, and the CMP lines, that's your contour coming up the road, um, it's a site plan. So the contour line here is eighty-one, there's ninety right there, ninety-one, so there's your ten-foot line.
Ten foot, what do you mean ten foot?
Uh, height.
Oh, okay, ten foot up from the existing line, up the hill.
From, looks like we're about eighty to eighty-one in this general area here.
From the sh- from the water?
Uh, the-
Height of the water, I guess is what I'm asking.
It's about a ten-foot drought.
Correct.
Yeah, is that what we're?
From the current foundation to the water.
If this is eighty, and he's not using sea level, he's using a baseline down here where it's seventy at the water, so it gains ten feet from the water to this area here, then it gains another ten feet when we're getting into this contour line right, right in through here. Some reminder photos, just showing how that existing goes in.
That didn't go all the way over for that view, that was a good one. And very good to the roof.
So where's, what's this, this is-
That's what I was proposing.
Yeah.
So I was looking at bringing the roof line away from the lake twelve feet, having twenty feet ahead of the hundred-foot line, and then adding off to the right. The white is a gutter system I would install in a central catch basin, and I'd also pitch the driveway into that central catch basin, and then replant and revegetate ahead of the twelve-foot area. And I could even vegetate further forward ahead of that, towards the lake. Moving the roof line away from the lake, and also right now the current gutter system and the current roof line pitches towards the lake to put the gable in opposing the lake, to direct the runoff as much as fast as we could. I spoke to civil consultants as well as the excavator that would do the work, and they both recommended a catch basin set in stone, putting the gutter system to it, wrapped in, uh, fabric, uh, would be a good way to handle runoff.
That's just a barren point there, about a hundred, one, hundred fifty-one to that pin. Show what that number is, and then one ninety-one back here, follows this way stone wall. So that driveway as you're coming in is on this property line there and splits off-
Is that a shared driveway with, with both houses or is that just yours?
Right at the point where goes, it tees off to the right, there's also another driveway that's on the map to the left, and then straight ahead is just mine.
Questions, comments from everybody?
What happens on the back end of the power lines there, like what's?
Through here?
Yeah.
I think the-
It's sloping down?
It flattens to a point, it's still a gradual uphill, but not as steep as the front side.
Right, the road goes along kind of along the top of that escarpment, I do, along the top of it.
So Jason, as I, as I said a couple of weeks ago, our mandate for the most part is trying to get things as far away from the lake as we possibly can. What, what would be, and I know you not only want to rebuild the garage, but you want to put a large extension on that garage.
Correct.
Um, what would be an issue with taking your garage that you want that twenty-four by thirty or whatever it was, push that back behind the one-hundred-foot line, and then if you can't easily attach the garage, the second garage, put the garage coming in off the road up here, so that they're maybe detached from one another?
Right now I'm trying to not limit, we've been in the house six, seven months, not limit future, whatever we might end up doing with the home itself. Um, I guess if I can't, I'm willing to move it back to twelve feet and expand outward. If I'm unable to do that, I guess I'd prefer to repair the structure as it is. Use my thirty percent expansion to go a foot and a half across the hundred-foot lines, put the piece where we're talking into the hillside. So the real debate right now is whether or not we move the structure away from the lake or leave it where it is. I did have a conversation with Coleman Clark at the DEP, he's the chair, coordinator of the school water management. He's, obviously the town does this here for final decisions, but it was his opinion that whenever they're able to move a roof line away from the lake, it's an investment because of the current watershed.
Did he know it was extra property?
I told him, the first, I sent him an email, followed up with a conversation, and the email I sent him, I do have a two-acre lot, I sent him pictures as we see today, um, and these are my options, whether I work with the ordinance that we have in play to repair the foundation, utilize the thirty percent where it exists, or to tear it back, tear it down, move it twelve feet back and add on. And I also spoke with, I forget the other gentleman's name, as I was trying to go through their system. Anything moving away from the lake with the roof line and directing water away from the lake was a primary objective. You know, the current gutter that's on that corner, uh, drains down to the hill of the lake, I mean, obviously we can correct that regardless. But I am trying to make things better than they are.
And I, and I also remember there was a discussion, or maybe it was at the site visit, of the drain in the middle of the driveway?
There's a drain in the driveway that currently goes to the lake that's got a half-ass plug in it that overflows. It's not adequate for the current runoff, and it doesn't catch the current runoff. There's also a second drain that's in the garage floor.
Would also trigger it, so-
We're talking one piece of a foundation.
And that's where I was getting to, I had talked to the DEP to say, is one wall the foundation? And they said that's fairly slippery, and they could say one wall's, they consider, would, would consider repair. That was a verbal comment, whether I could get them to put that in writing, I'm not sure.
A repair or a replacement?
Repair.
Well, I'm kinda, I'm kinda sticking with the word enlargement because you're gonna be extend, expanding onto the existing foundation
But the existing piece-
with the new foundation, so you'd be enlarging the existing foundation.
But if I didn't, if I didn't do anything else, and I just worked with what I have, I can repair what I have there today, not even at all.
Certainly.
It's still do the repair.
You're only removing fifty percent of the value.
Yeah.
With less of it.
This is, we're not talking about maintenance.
Yeah, correct.
But, um, your proposal is to enlarge and enlarge the foundation as well as replace one wall in the foundation, um, and expand by third, and expand by the thirty percent.
But the reason, the reason- But the reason like we're here today was talking about the piece that we currently have, and then I was asked to-
Well, it's, it's-
Put the whole, we wanted to see the whole project, so we did include all that. But also on page nine, section one point eight, restoration of unsafe property, nothing in the ordinance shall prevent strengthening or restoring a safe condition. Any part of the building or structure declared unsafe by code enforcement, the wall is unadequately backfilled and is currently leaning.
Okay, well that would just bring you back to having to enlarge or replace or work on your foundations, so. I still feel like there isn't really anything behind it that stops us from moving it back, in fairness to all other property owners in the shoreline zone who have had a garage in this sort of situation, wanting to expand it thirty percent or repair it to a significant extent. We always ask them to move it back, there's no septic tank or road or nothing behind it stopping us from moving it back behind the hundred-foot line.
And say we've never pushed a dwelling unit behind the power lines?
Right. But this is a garage.
Yeah.
I know that's the-
No.
You know, it is a year-round home.
There is a difference between, I mean-
It is uphill, and I mean, you've probably all experienced the ice storms we had this winter, it's kind of difficult to go get your vehicle when you have three-year-old twins that are going uphill.
Wow, we have a living act in, you know. I don't know, that's just, I mean, in fairness to other property owners who've gone through the same thing, I really feel like you do trigger the thirty percent expansion and the, and the upgrade, you know, best possible location, um, procedure here, so.
But it is expandable where it sits by thirty percent.
Well then we, once you go to expand it that thirty percent, then we would, uh, see if you want to be relocated or not, we would look at the, we would look at you then just from your-
Ken, is thirty percent expansion for a relocation?
No. Well, but you're not going to, you're not gonna expand that by thirty percent without engineers involved fixing that foundation. It all comes back to that foundation, and you can- remove forty-nine percent, forty-nine point nine percent of the value and pick away at it a five-year cycle, that as well within your privy. The foundation's the tough part.
One piece of it.
Well, it's pretty much the same, same people as we had at the last meeting.
Thirty-foot foundation wall at sixty dollars a foot, eighteen hundred dollars, a couple thousand to backfill, you can't rebuild a garage for ten thousand dollars.
We're not supposed to be, um, considering the financial aspects of the project, unfortunately.
But that's what's, that's what it's stated, but it's stated in, it's stated in the ordinance that it's fifty percent of the market value.
But that's only one, one reason that you could trigger the best possible location procedure is by- It's gonna, there's multiple ways you could trigger the best possible location procedures.
Correct, but the way the repair reads is if you stay under fifty percent of the market value, you can repair an existing structure.
That's just one of the statements, I mean, I'm still, honestly, my, what I'm saying is that you've, I think you fall under the enlarge to replacement foundation triggering that as possible.
You're gonna look at the whole ordinance, not just a paragraph.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, I mean, there's probably another, there's probably ten other citations in here that would go right along with this project. You know, to benefit or, or to, either way, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it is pretty much the same constituents of the board that we had last time when we talked about it, unless anybody's come up with anything.
Yoli, you had a comment?
No.
Uh, I was just gonna clarify something, but it's kinda, it doesn't, it's kind of non-
I mean, it really looks like you're gonna be, you, you're looking to redo the building, so.
Yeah, it's hard because it does sound like there's room to move it back.
And we do, I seem to have a lot of impervious surface there pretty close to the lake. Just with the paved hill coming down there, I don't know. Anyone else on the board wanna add anything, I mean, I-
Well, if that's the case, is, are we ready for a motion? I mean, I'm, I'm throwing it out there, if there's more to comment, then that's fine too.
Yeah, yeah.
What were your thoughts on it?
I understand, I understand him wanting to be able to put a trailer back in, straight back, but I wonder if there is another way to restructure the new garage where that would be possible? And still make the, go back behind the hundred, uh, foot?
Uh, yeah, anything's possible, at least in the lake. I think that would be possible.
You know, right now I'm willing to move it back twelve feet away from the lake and make things better, I mean, there's nothing saying I have to tear it down, I-
No, but, I mean, but it's gonna, twelve feet, I think we're, we're still asking for you to-
I got a piece of me-
Move it back another twenty-four feet beyond that, so you're, not quite twenty. To get us, I think it's about twenty-four more feet to get, get you to the hundred there.
The left back corner was, it's a foot and a half off the hundred-foot line, and it would leave twenty feet, so twenty-one and a half.
So it's basically the full width of the building there.
There's a twelve-foot, on that picture there, there's a, the twelve-foot addition that would go away.
Well, I don't know, it doesn't seem like we're really gonna come up with anything new, we are-
I, I mean, there's nothing new either though that, uh, we can ask for, there's not, it's not like we're looking for more information.
Well, I mean, we can, I mean, we can try to get creative with it, but I still think we should just go, and, you know, in fairness to other property owners who have had this sort of situation, it's not the primary dwelling, it has plenty of room if you move back. Usually we don't even see these things, Ken's like, oh, you have to move back behind the hundred if you want to do that, and they're, oh, okay. And that's, but we don't even see it at the planning board a lot of times, so.
Okay, and what is the process for repairing the foundation at this point?
You would, um, get an appraiser to appraise the value of the stuff you're removing, and as you're throwing it in the dumpster, the appraiser would continue the updates of it, and that would, you'd know how much you can remove. The foundation, I'd probably have the DEP come out and firm up what they told me on the phone of, uh, he'd be comfortable with one wall being replaced and not calling it a foundation.
So explain that to me again one more time, you're, you're saying that there's something out there that DEP would be willing to say or write, which would be telling us what?
That replacing one side of the foundation would not be considered replacing the foundation. Because as soon as he replaces the foundation, he's relocating it, as soon as he removes more than fifty percent of it, he's relocating it.
Or if you like poured a, uh, another wall, foundation wall inside the existing one to support it, buttress it, that could be considered, that wouldn't be replacing it, you'd be adding material, you wouldn't be taking anything away, so. Though of course it would make it much smaller, it's probably not what you'd wanna do, but-
So you could replace up to fifty percent and then-
Remove, remove fifty percent of the value.
Five years?
Yeah, so if you did the roof and the foundation and the window, whatever it was, blah blah, you add all those up within the five years and make sure you're not over the fifty percent.
I bet that foundation, that one wall would be almost twenty percent of the value, I bet it would be pretty, pretty high, it'd be a substantial amount.
But it's only gonna come over a foot and a half to cross the hundred-foot line on the expansion.
Yeah, but if you're replacing this wall here, that would be a substantial amount, it'd be fifty percent of the value being removed, would be my assumption. It's gonna be difficult to find an appraiser that's dealt with this quite a bit because most people throw the whole thing in the dumpster and relocate it, there's not a lot out there.
I mean, I think it'd be nice to move it back, you'd just give yourself a bigger yard and have more room next to the lake to entertain and, people seem to like that, I mean, sort of, I mean-
Plenty of room in the front, I prefer, I prefer the privacy to the right. He says give a little buffer in the neighborhood. It's useful storage sometimes.
All right, then, unless I'm hearing something new, is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that, um, the garage here, let me get all my ducks in a row here. Anyone else?
I guess if it's gonna be replaced, that'd be the one hundred-foot line?
That's what I'm thinking, I'm just-
Gotta order it?
Yeah, I was trying to get a room, it's- But should we, um, I'm sorry, I forget your name, Drummy?
Jason.
Jason Rummy?
Not really, that's the, Drummy's the neighbor.
Yeah, okay, I see, right here, but Roy, I'm there, okay, all right, well, um, I'll make a motion that, uh, the garage here owned by Jason Roy, um, be relocated behind the hundred-foot line, or, um, be repaired in place, you know, within the conditions of the ordinance.
I don't think you need the last part of the ordinance.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm-
I need the last part of your motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the Jason Roy's garage be, uh, relocated behind the hundred-foot line.
Is, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Comments on the motion? All in favor?
It's a tough one.
Yeah, it is a tough one.
All right, Jason, so you know where we are?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and our theory again is push back, push back, and I know that in this case maybe it's not gonna get pushed back, but, uh, you know, from our perspective, uh, that's what we're hoping is gonna happen.
Is there an appraiser you prefer to work with? Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Just a licensed man appraiser.
Yeah, give me a call next week if something, we can go over it.
All right, thanks. Richard?
Hi.
We started without you.
It's just three of us here tonight, so, you want us up at the table here or-
Certainly, come on up.
How's your arm, guys?
It's getting better. Before you leave, go out with your, that ice thing, yeah, so it's in my car.
You don't, okay. Okay, I gotta talk to him too about that, he wants to put the, you know, the tree we're gonna cut down next week, so. He says what he tells you.
I haven't heard anything about this.
Okay, so you can't, no. Yes, so, can I- Oh, come on up there, sure.
This is why I came.
Sorry about that, I thought we were talking later. Thanks, Bob. I'm Richard Nass, Mike McCrone, Carol Ward, three of the seven members of the Acton Commercial Marijuana Committee, appointed by the Board of Selectmen, sorry ladies. Pointed by the Board of Selectmen late September, we worked for four months, finished it up in late January, issued a report which is available online, a couple versions of ones, the twenty-pager that's readable. Uh, volume two is five hundred pages of zoning from Colorado and Washington, so, uh, that's, what came to me basically was Tom Cashin calling saying, is there, I think he said, is there a role for the, future role for the planning board in this whole marijuana issue, and I said, maybe, um, and then you and I talked and welcomed the opportunity to talk about what we've done, uh, what we know, the Selectmen have set up a vote, a referendum vote for June twelfth to ban all commercial marijuana activity in town back-
Or to not ban.
What's that?
Or to not ban. Well, that's something that's not easy, you know.
So what we've done so far is we've passed a moratorium, okay? In addition to the vote, referendum vote on the, on the referendum last November, November sixteen I think it was where it passed, enacted among other towns to allow the recreational use of marijuana. So all of the work we're doing has nothing to do with that. So if you wanna buy marijuana and smoke it or eat it or whoever you want with it, that's legal, and nothing that we've done is gonna impact that. Nothing that we've done is gonna impact the medical marijuana thing, which is a different statute, and which is changing. One of my themes tonight is gonna be the change, none of this stuff is, none of this stuff is fixed or well-understood, it's all rapid change.
So the moratorium didn't go for recreational?
The, the moratorium passed.
Yeah.
So we now are under a hundred and eighty-day moratorium which expires in late- And so we now are under a hundred and eighty day moratorium, which expires in late May. Okay? And that would prohibit the commercial.
Commercial.
Per- permission, it would prohibit the town from issuing any permit for commercial marijuana activity. And, and with the referendum and stuff, as usually, there was five categories that were pretty well-defined, last week, we added, we took one off and added a sixth, maybe, so.
So there's back to five?
Well, we're back to five.
That's right, yeah. Replaced one with.
So, uh, testing, growing, uh, social clubs, retail sales, and what was the fifth? Testing, growing, anyway, there's.
Cultivation, growing.
Yeah.
Production, like shaking.
Edibles and stuff like that, but.
So it's five or six categories, depending on.
Social clubs got thrown out.
Well, in the state statutes.
Right, in the new law, so, you know.
But there's still, if the, the state law, whatever version does not pass the legislature, that's still on, on the books, it was in the referendum, so it's still a possibility.
Well, yeah, that's what, before, until the state does something, we're still kind of up in the air, but we really don't know what's gonna happen.
Can, can you guys clear something up for me? What we're talking about, basically, is, is because of a bill in both the House and the Senate.
Yeah.
That was passed, sent to the governor, who either has vetoed it or will veto it.
In the last, this is another iteration, there's already that iteration, last year, they did that.
Mm-hmm.
Governor veto, legislature upholds his veto.
Okay.
They continue to work that as another bill, that'd be seventeen eighteen.
And they were comparing that in the, somewhere in here.
So the, the PowerPoint that you got came from the legislature.
Yeah.
And that's the eighteen pager, and that is the new version of the law, so there's been some, some changes to it.
And so the comparison between them is the current law and a, and a law from last year?
Yes, this was made for the legislature, so they need to know what the differences were between what they did last time. It's probably less important to, you know, your consideration here, 'cause the other one is gone and dead, they need to know what the changes were.
And it's reasonable to think that it's going to be, the veto will be overturned?
Governor says it's, no, I don't think so, I don't think we know, the governor says he's gonna veto it, he hasn't issued the veto yet or the veto message.
Mm-hmm.
There's been some comments about why he might do that, will the House, uh, override his, uh, his veto or not, Senate will, will the House, we don't know at this point. I mean, they have a record, not on many things, but they have a record of passing something and then upholding his veto, so that's still possible.
Blackback mode.
Well, you'll see Mike and I, and we disagree.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we disagree.
A lot of stuff, so we, we're here.
But if you're.
Well, we did, I think that's.
We came up with a report that I think was, uh, balanced on both sides.
And so the first twelve pages of the report, we're in agreement on, and it didn't come very easy, you know.
No, it didn't, no, it was like.
So the first twelve, get to page thirteen, then you begin to see a majority and a minority report.
It seemed easy, when I read through the first three pages, it seemed like you guys were, you know.
Yeah, it seemed all logical. No, no, it didn't happen that way.
Oh, okay.
And so on every point, uh, we've had, you know, substantial discussion, a lot of compromise, a lot of change, and so what you're reading in the twenty-page report is mostly agreed to, even if you continue to read the recommendations, you'll see lots of agreement, uh, on points, not on everything, but basically on, on things, so. I mean, there's a couple of other things I wanted to, when you read this stuff, there was one, one of our members, Jerry Knowlton, basically, that, um, had the skills and the equipment, basically, to do a really almost professional job on the report, at least from my standpoint, that wasn't a skill that I brought to this thing. So Jerry works for Price Waterhouse out of Boston, he has the access to the, the stuff, and that meant, it sounds simple, but it sounds like a conference call, basically. So we were talking to people in State of Washington, in Colorado, eighteen different calls that we couldn't, not all of us were on all of them, but we talked to a lot of people out there. We said initially, we wanna talk to some folks in small-town Wa- State of Washington, small-town Colorado, near the border, that were like Acton, and we did. And they weren't all that way, but we talked to a lot of people, and you'll see in the report, the results of that, and so Jerry, not only did Jerry arrange that, but he had the skills, basically, to figure out who to talk to, and, and they were all very cooperative, and this was not like pulling teeth, we talked to a lot of people in the same situation that we're in, we thought, and so what you see in the twenty pages is their opinions and the problems that they've had, and they had several years of experience under their belt, I think it would be fair to say, Colorado and Washington. And there were differences, substantial, between the two states, so, all of that's there, uh, the question I think that we wanted to talk about tonight was, um, what role might they be for the, uh, the, uh, planning board going forward, 'cause you'll see, a lot of this is really land use stuff, uh, not all of it, but you're talking about, um, noise, you're talking about smell, this is an interesting one, because especially out of Spokane, Washington, they have huge problems with outdoor grows that, that smell, and it's one of the things we agreed on, is that if we're gonna do it in Acton, it should be in a.
Well, you're, you're kinda muddy in the words, you go.
Okay.
The grows, yeah, the grows in Spokane are illegal grows.
Okay.
Which aren't addressed by this, we're dealing with legal grows, there's nothing anybody can do about an illegal grow with town ordinances.
This is.
It's illegal, it's illegal.
Right, but I think we, as a, as residents of wherever you wanna be a resident of, we all have police, we have enforcement types of things, and that's part of their job. I think it would be foolish for us not to recognize that there's gonna be a lot of illegal activity, and it's not that the planning board's gonna do anything about that, but as citizens of Maine and this town, we should look for somebody to do something about it, so that's still a big, huge, open, uh, question of this, is who's gonna do it and what might it consist of.
Well, my, our position on the minority part was that we think the town needs to protect itself, regardless of whether there's, um, a ban in place or not. Because what had happened in at least one town out west was, or several towns, especially in the State of Washington, is the, um, the state government kept changing the rules and then forcing towns, or through changing the state law, people were, um, able to set up and s- set up in towns that didn't have rules in place. But that, to, to, to cover that end also is, is that out there, county government is bigger than town government. Counties are, that's where every, all the power is, and that's where it got convoluted, so comparing our town with any town out there is, it's really an apple and oranges kind of situation, you know, we did it with population basis, like, you know, the same number of people living in the town, with that, that, in that respect, we tried to.
Near the border.
Right, yeah, near borders, things like that, but.
Near the border of a state that doesn't have recreational marijuana, that would be the Washington-Oregon border, uh, so we talked to several towns, so. Now, we did find, as Mike said, that there's things that aren't comparable, and one of those is the county government system, county government's big out there, that means the county sheriff is their primary, uh, police enforcement, uh, so, you know, and also the areas are bigger, a lot of big space.
Mm-hmm. Big, big, huge.
So, things were comparable, and, and the zoning that we collected may be useful to somebody, but there's gonna be substantial differences, so, um.
We, you know, just feel that, uh, that Acton should have something in place regardless, you know, you know, some rules in their back pocket in case Augusta does weird stuff, because that may end up happening if not enough towns join in on the commercial side of this business. Um, if they don't, there's, there's rumors or talks in other state houses of making laws that supersede local laws after the fact, I mean, and that's the kind of stuff that was going on out west, so, I think regardless of whether we ban it or we don't ban it, we should come up with some common sense rules to have in place in case we're forced, because personally, I don't.
This is another area where we disagree, I think that at some point or other, a few years down the road, two or three years, when this all gets sorted out, and I'm assuming that we have it in Acton, we have a ban in place, so nothing is gonna happen in Acton, uh, that we'll then be able to figure out whether it makes sense for Acton to be involved in retail sales or anything else, testing or, or whatever the other categories are, but in the meantime, there's just, every day, there's something new and changing. What we found out from the folks in Washington, in Colorado, Washington especially, is they were not getting any support from the state government, things were changing at the legislature. They had set, some of the towns had set up zoning, and they found out they, they had no ability to enforce things that were changing. Yesterday, on the news, is a good example, State of Washington is now considering, uh, home delivery of mar- recreational marijuana. Uh, so, I don't know what they're gonna do out there, how it is, I sat through in the legislature, the, the home delivery of alcohol, that was a huge debate, can I buy it? Like, can I buy wine from Napa Valley, have it delivered to my home, doesn't sound like a big deal, it's a huge deal, here's the reason, teenager at home, wine gets delivered, gets ordered and delivered. Who gets it? Nobody knows who gets it, UPS is not responsible, FedEx, nobody's responsible, so.
But the home delivery for marijuana is a little different.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's the same debate you're gonna have, not just as an example.
No, but it is handled different than the.
We don't know how it's handled, it's been proposed in Washington.
California, they do have home deliveries.
California's just barely getting up and running.
But it's been home delivery for medicinal.
For, this is not, this is not medical marijuana, this is recreation.
I'm just saying, it's a little different, it doesn't come UPS.
You just illustrated my point, is that the town of Acton should not consider themselves safe by just banning.
I, I guess, Richard, I'm not quite sure why you don't, uh, uh, not in agreement with the idea of setting up guidelines, rules ahead of time, you, you seem like you would rather push that back.
Yeah. Because I think it's changing, every, anything that you do, that I'm used to that developing rules or ordinances, whatever, I think it's gonna be a waste of time, until things settle down. I am very much, and this is fairly common, that these new things come down the pike, you wanna jump and try to do something about it, you're, you know, it's just not gonna be effective.
But you're thinking that the ban is gonna be, that there's gonna be a ban.
Yeah, we don't, none of this really, I'm thinking the town.
But you think there's gonna be a ban, but if there's not a ban and we don't have anything in place.
If there's not a ban, then we need to go at it a different way, and that is to begin to set up some rules.
Well, there is a compromise, you can, you don't have to address every specific problem, but you can set things up like, like Sanford has done, which is set up zones. Even though they have a ban, they have zones where, that if we ha- if we're gonna do it, we can set it, we can set them up here. I mean, things like that, that you can kind of have in place in case push comes to shove, vote, vote is one way that you're not, you won't like, or votes the other way. You still have that in place, and it doesn't cost anything to be prepared.
It does cost this group, because this group that does it, a lot of time, and it's gonna be, I think, wasted time in the next couple of years till we figure out what is working, what isn't working. The other thing we explored initially was what's in it for Acton in this thing, there is no, we spent a lot of time on the revenue side of things, is there gonna be any potential revenue that might relieve property tax, the property tax burden, we can't find it, uh, we can't find it in the new law, we can't find it anyways yet, but that, again, is gonna change.
Don't they say like five or ten percent?
Yes, the, the sales tax all goes to the state, except for five percent of the ten percent sales tax, so, for the towns that have retail establishment, okay? And there's an excise tax for those who are growing it.
Right.
Or cultivating it, okay, a little uncertainty as to, 'cause the news people are talking about a twenty percent tax, I can't figure that out.
It's ten, ten and ten.
Ten and ten, but if you're, the ten is excise tax based on people growing it or cultivating it, the other ten is, is the retail sales tax, similar to what you'd pay on any other sales tax item in the state.
And that wouldn't necessarily be the same people, because apparently, from what I've heard, you can't sell out of a place that you are grown.
Right, right, so that's.
You can't sell out of a place of growing?
Not.
Retail sales.
Retail sales.
No, farm stands.
No, you can't retail sell, you have to sell.
Pick your own.
Anyway, this is a very different, it's very convoluted, that's why I'm saying that you, you're welcome to spend time, uh, trying to develop some rules, as Mike says, or zoning. I just think for the next couple of years, you're wasting your time, and plus, it really depends on.
What kind of problems did the small towns talk about?
Uh, so smell, noise, uh, being ignored by the state, signage, uh, when that left to their own devices, people come up with a very attractive sign, which then people worried that was gonna be attractive to kids, uh, diversion, Colorado example, which Mike doesn't like to talk about, uh, but they have, what was it talking about? It's in the report, is the, the town that had permitted six, uh, grows, I think, and found, when they went out looking, this is seventeen hundred square miles now, or comedy in, right, Colorado. They found six hundred or three hundred more growing operations.
Illegal grows.
Absolutely.
Illegal growth.
Just to give you some sense, this is a big money maker for certain people, whether they wanna be illegal or legal, you can make a lot of money doing this stuff.
And this has been going on in this town for years.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, the illegal activity, and unfortunately, with the new law, I don't see it, nipping it in the bud, isn't gonna make much of a dent in the, in the black market. Just don't see it happening.
Probably not.
Because, first of all, they raised the taxes, which makes the pot more expensive. So, in, in my opinion, the law is kinda useless, other than it's gonna line, line some coffers in Augusta. Um, that said, the illegality isn't gonna be addressed here by these folks, by us, it's gonna happen regardless.
And it, does it become an enforcement, and is the county sheriff willing to do something about it?
It hasn't been so far, and in fact.
So were the, were the law enforcement people in Colorado and in Washington, were they able to give you information that said that the il- illegal grows increased significantly once it became legal, or is it stayed the same?
Well, it, it depends on who you talk to.
Yeah, I don't think anybody expressed an opinion about that.
How would you know?
The one, the one case he's talking about, yes, they, they increased dramatically in that one area. Um, in, in other areas, um, where they had what I considered common sense decent rules, didn't seem, there wasn't any indication one way or the other. So, I'm guessing that if it had been a problem, they would've said something. Um, one police, uh, police, uh, persons did say that they would, uh, and it wasn't somebody we interviewed, it was in, it's in the, in the other notes, is that, um, it's, it hasn't been, well, as it says in our report, it hasn't, there hasn't been this, this dire consequences of, of legality. Um, pretty much, nothing has changed, I did learn an interesting new fact, is that in the states that have legalized marijuana, binge drinking among young people has gone down. Take that, make that, make of that what you will.
Every day, in every news, there's pluses and minuses.
There you go, I mean.
We did not find that there was any pluses for Acton, from what we heard, is my opinion of this thing.
That was true.
If you can find, if you, if you, yeah.
Right, there was a majority.
Yeah, if you can find pluses here, pluses for Acton, not pluses for a grower, or pluses, there's money to be made for somebody, if you can find a plus for Acton, I'd love to hear it, because it didn't happen.
Having a well-run business in town is not necessarily a negative.
It is not gonna help the town of Acton to have an additional enforcement problem.
Why isn't it? Well, here we're getting back into the same old.
The town of Green yesterday, here's one for you, last night on the news, the town of Green, two people, uh, forced their way into a house, this is the report, Channel Six now is reporting. One of them had a gun, uh, there was a tussle, the two people that were breaking in essentially were chased away. Uh, the reporter then says, one of them may have shot himself in the foot, but then here's the, here's the kicker, they, they think that this was a medical marijuana, this was almost a sideline, medical marijuana facility, or selling facility, this house was, and that was almost a sideline, why is that? Because in the state of Maine, if you are licensed to sell medical marijuana, nobody else knows about it, it's secret information, you're licensed by the state, but you can't find out as a citizen of, who's licensed in your town or whatever. Uh, just give you an idea of what you're facing here, so, the, the line between recreational marijuana and medical marijuana is getting blurred, tighter and tighter, because people are figuring out, you can easily get a medical marijuana card, you can then get your marijuana from a medical marijuana provider without all the hassle that is taking place now, so that's one of the things.
Well, right now, you can just grow it yourself, and you're all set.
Yeah, you can still grow it yourself.
I mean, so. Right, I mean, that's.
I think something Richard was talking about is like the, the aspect of cash business.
Yes.
Not a big aspect, like, you know.
People were breaking into this house, and things, it either steal marijuana or money.
It's supposed to, to get the cash, yeah, 'cause you're not supposed to legally put the money you made that way into the banks or something like that.
Well, they're, they're working through that.
You gotta work in that.
I don't know how it works exactly, but, so I know that people end up with more money on cash, and that, that end up with.
The credit unions, the credit unions have stepped to the cash, they're, the credit unions have basically stepped up, and they are apparently figured out a way to process the cash from medical marijuana, generally.
Oh, yeah.
One inventive retail store in Colorado has, I thought was a great way to do it, he put a cash, uh, ATM machine in his business, and the money goes right to the bank. You know, he, he just takes all his money and puts it, deposits it's in the ATM machine every night and. every night and, you know, to.
Anyway, so I don't know, you know, we can, as I said, we spent four months on this. Got some words on a piece of paper. Be happy to continue to talk about it.
Any specific, like, border issues?
Uh, yes. In fact, the, one of the folks, I think it was Washington, basically said that they, we asked them basically what were their main problems. And one was selling to kids. The other was selling to people who were across the border. So that, that, for us, for Acton, that is a substantial issue.
Sorry, I don't remember anybody saying it was selling to kids.
Okay. But the issue was, what are the, what are the major problems?
Are you talking out of a legal operation?
Yeah, so this is La Platte County, Colorado. Number one law enforcement issue, that was the question, is what diversion A to minors, B across, across state lines, and C illegal grows posing as legal to out-of-state buyers. The references are here.
Right, but you make it sound like they've got it from the store.
That's.
I mean, the diversion to minors can come in any number, it's like going into dad's liquor cabinet and taking liquor.
Or having a fake ID.
That's diversion to minors also.
Okay, however, however it happens.
What's, what's an out-of-state buyer? I don't, I don't quite get that.
Someone from New Hampshire.
Yeah, if you come into Maine to buy a pot, it's still legal to buy a pot in Maine whether you live in New Hampshire.
It's not legal to buy and take it out.
Besides that, New Hampshire's decriminalized anyways.
Yeah, but not for recreational, not recreational.
Is the interstate commerce playing through this, or?
I've not heard any kind of reference to interstate commerce on these issues.
You just go a few states.
So to be specific, La Platte County, Colorado, people we talked to out there, that was their, those were their law enforcement issues, that was the question, okay? Diversion to minors, diversion across state lines.
Which they didn't offer any stats to, they just made it sound like it was a problem. I mean, you know, I mean, if you're.
Do you wanna not believe it's a problem?
Yeah, what do you want, what do you wanna believe, Mike?
Well, no.
Mike, tell them your feeling about police officers. They'll really be interested in that.
Diversion, diversion to minors is a problem no matter what, okay?
It is.
But it doesn't mean that it has, it came from this legal operation.
No, it's, I'm sure it came from somebody that's legally giving it to little kids.
Right.
So, how, how can you get around this, Mike?
But that's.
How do you get it? How do they get it?
So, so before we go off on the, coming back to us again.
Yep.
It doesn't appear that I'm hearing a recommendation that's even similar as to what we could or should do.
That's why I'm saying.
Except perhaps, maybe what we should do as a group somewhere along the line is to sit down and at least hash through the idea, do we wanna do something about an ordinance change next year? Do we wanna hold off? Because there seems to be two sides of the coin.
Yes, that's one of the options. There's another option too, is, don't forget, we're a creation of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
We're advisory to them. So I don't, I assume that, because most of this is land used, that if you were to take it up, I mean, they don't particularly give you direction, right? You're kind of independent. So if you wanted to take it up, that probably wouldn't be a problem, but, you know, it might be nice to ask them. This is their, we're a vehicle of them, we've given them the report, and they haven't asked us to do anything else yet, other than keep weighing in on the referendum on June 12th.
Sure. But if they wanted us to do something, they would make that clear to us. We could still talk about it and then see what our feelings are.
Yeah.
Separate from what they may or may not tell us.
And that's one of the things we wanted to do tonight, is there a role for the Acton Planning Board in this whole recreational marijuana debate?
Let me ask you this question. I, I would assume there's gonna be a public hearing.
There is, I forgot to tell you, May 15th at seven o'clock.
And, and do you guys ever consider, I mean, I'm assuming that this is gonna draw a number of people.
They put it at seven because they think it might draw a big crowd.
Do you, do you ever consider doing an informational meeting in addition to a public hearing? So that at least if people can't make a date, because this may be a big thing, at least have more than one.
We haven't, and when we did our four months of meetings, number, you know, not every week, but number of meetings, we did it on our own. We did not take any input from the few people that attended these things, because we wanted to do what we could internally with the seven of us and make a report to the Selectmen. So we did not entertain much input from the public. We did it purposely, basically. It's hard enough among seven people to figure out what you're doing without, you know, people getting more involved in that. But certainly, I, the committee probably would be willing to entertain any kind of public information meetings. It's not gonna be.
I don't know, that would be very good.
Yeah, it's not gonna, as you can see tonight, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be informative. So, you know, based on what you know about the situation now, from the voters' standpoint, I think you're gonna bring, we're gonna be asking you to vote on a ban. Ban will be in ordinance, it will be in effect like any other ordinance until it gets changed.
And again, have you actually seen the question that will be there in June?
Yes, I'll, I'll give you the question here. This has been approved by this, by this Selectman and the lawyers.
As I've learned more about the politics in town.
Yeah.
I think that you're right, Richard, as far as, you know, you don't know what the state's gonna do. Until you find out really what the state's just gonna do, you can't do a lot of stuff and you have a death. But, but learning more about the politics, especially in Acton recently, I, I don't know why Acton wouldn't have an ordinance on it, because they have an ordinance on every goddamn thing.
Okay, all right, all right. So, I don't know, Bob, if you're a favor of this or not.
And there's nothing that I'm going against. There's no ordinances that are bothering me. But, no, I'm not just talking about the Planning Board, I'm talking about those other ordinances around town too, on different things. I mean, they're always stepping out and stepping above the state lines and going against the state and making their own laws or making their own criteria and guidance and everything else that they have. And it's voted by the people and that, you know, so it is the, you know, it is the norm of Acton.
Just to make you feel better, Bob, most of the towns around us have enacted a moratorium or a ban. Newfield's a good example, our border encounter in the north enacted a ban, and then by petition, in the last town meeting, they got enough people to sign a petition to repeal what they had just passed a few months before. That failed in the deal, the town meeting. So, they still have the ban. Most of the towns around us, when they've considered and have decided to stop or not allow anything to happen till we figure out what's going on, that'd be my.
Well, the social club is absolutely ridiculous.
Well, the social club is not actually the ban, they said in 2020.
How can you go and, you know, you drive someplace and you smoke a lot of pot, you get high, and maybe you didn't smoke that much, maybe you're not that high. But how do you know? You know what I mean? And why, why is it?
It's a little different from a bar, though.
But that, well, again, it isn't, it isn't. But it's hot, it's a lot harder to test for marijuana, because marijuana's gonna stay in your system for 30 days anyways. So therefore, I don't know, they're gonna have to come up with a new meter, I guess.
Now, they have it out west.
And I hope it doesn't go into an office.
Well, no, they have, they have a system out west, but the problem with it is, is that if you're, if you're a chronic pot smoker, you know, you smoke a lot of pot, you're gonna have a certain level in your system that's gonna break the law when you, when you get pulled over. Because, but, so.
Yeah, but you could have that in there for a couple of days, right? You might not even be high when they.
Well, that's what I mean, you know, you could just be, you could be straight, but just have this level in your system.
One other point that the Selectmen are considering, they haven't decided yet, the question is extending the moratorium. There was a lot of, so we voted for 180 days, that ends March, or May 24, something like that. So they are now considering, they haven't done it yet, an extension of 90 days, just to get us beyond June 12th.
And the, what does Selectmen just do that?
They can, yes. They decided on the first round, put it out to the voters, but they have, under the statute, they can extend it. In fact, that might be, these moratoriums are stuff that the Planning Board often deals with, you know.
Well, they can't put a moratorium in, in the first time without a vote.
No, they can't.
Right, yeah.
No, they can't.
They can only extend it.
They can, they can do it without a vote and they can extend it.
I was led to believe that that has to be a town council, a town with a town council, not a Selectmen.
I thought that they could do it for.
Well, we might wanna find out.
Whatever, right.
It doesn't matter, it passed by the voters. The extension they're thinking of is 90 days. If it fails, if the ban fails on June 12th, they are cognizant and have talked about, you know, a couple of weeks anyway, to decide what the next step might be. So that's the reason for 90 days as opposed to whatever, something less.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Can I ask a couple more questions?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm wondering, like, if, like, just in terms of, like, would it make sense for us to look at, like, beefing of our good neighbor ordinances? Like, like, because we have noise, we have, we don't have, like, smell, but I don't know what was.
Well, I'm still, you know, I'm not sure about the noise, depending on where you live, maybe, but it's not gonna be necessarily based on a marijuana place. That's a point of contention between us.
Well, I'm just saying that, like, we have noise in our good neighborhood, we don't have, like, smell.
We don't have odor. We don't have odor in our particular order, maybe in other places.
If the ordinance was, and you had, you know, the building thing, and you had, and because you were a grow, you would have certain sort of filters, but that would not be the issue.
But that would even for, like, illegal.
For, that would be illegal.
Right. No, 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 I'm saying, like, just like in general, like, if you're.
Your neighbor's got pigs and they're right on your property lawn.
Yeah, or your neighbor has, is growing their own marijuana.
What we found from the folks in Spokane, dealing with ordinances on smell is very difficult. The question is, when is somebody in violation, you know, and how do you measure that?
How big are the fields that the smell has come off?
Well, the fields are all small, but as far as town, our recommendation to the town was not to, to allow any legal outdoor grows, was to put them all inside, so they could do the scrubbing and all that, to kind of mitigate the whole.
And not an existing building, this has to be a purpose-built building for that. That would be our, that was one of our agreed on.
Yeah, that would be something you guys would look at.
You're gonna grow it, you're gonna build a building.
We'd have to come before us anyway, or at least.
Oh, yeah, they'd have to go through the Planning Board, for sure.
And, and they're, they're really expensive to build, you know, with all the.
Yeah, another question too, Bill?
Um, oh, and then I was just, like, we have a signage ordinance also. I don't know if, like, taking a look at that to see.
One thing we heard on the signs, I recall, was a town that we talked to that was disturbed, it's a retail establishment, had a very attractive sign. I don't know if it was neon or just flags. And the issue then became, too attractive to kids. And so that was an issue they brought up, is one of the things that happened.
But then it was changed, and they were taken down, and that problem was fixed.
Right.
So.
And isn't the state, you know, with the signage?
Yeah, the state has a very, if you look at the PowerPoint, there's a thing in there with specific about signs. And the town of Acton is allowed to set up any signage situation that they want.
So a lot of these things can be solved with zoning. It's not that, the other question that, that, at least I felt, we've had some discussion about this, is enforcement. So we got 20 hours a week of a deputy sheriff and we got code enforcement. Every Selectmen's meeting that I've been to lately, somebody's up there complaining about code enforcement. Junk, whatever it is, can't, we can't, apparently can't enforce our ordinances now. So what makes you think that we're gonna be able to enforce marijuana?
Well, based on our recommendation, based on the recommendation of the, of the minority, we recommended that, it's not like we're recommending that you set up all the, 100 places are gonna open business. You start off with one retail, one grow.
And maybe a lab.
And maybe a lab, and that's it. So how much more difficult is it gonna be to enforce the code at these three places?
Okay, one of the, here's, here's how difficult. Depending on who you pick to give that permit to, the next guy that comes into town says, I'm equally eligible and I should be eligible, so we're gonna, I'll see you in court.
It's up to the town.
I'll see you in court. That's what's happened to a lot of the folks out west that we talked to. They can't enforce the ordinances they put in. They, they made a valiant attempt to develop ordinances that are under attack consistently and constantly.
Well, that's what, that's the fear I have, is if we just ban it, we're gonna be in court.
Well, you don't permit anybody. That's pretty much provided for, in both the referendum and in the proposed state laws, which haven't passed.
So is the fact that there's state autonomy in setting up the rules. That's.
It's how you're gonna put a lot of.
If you go to zoning, both Jerry and I said, we're not working on it. If you want, if you wanna figure this out, it's all yours.
I'm just too bad Joyce isn't here tonight, 'cause she, she was interested in it.
Who was?
Joyce.
Okay.
She said right here, but she.
And I don't know where, hers cashing, she's the one that started this.
Yeah, he's got surgery coming.
Does he really?
Really, so he's in bed.
Yeah, Tom, yeah, Tom's going in. Yeah, he is, under the knife.
Okay, then, we, we still have a couple other things we gotta deal with.
Thanks for that.
So, all right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Good luck. All right, May 15th, first time, is that?
Yep, seven o'clock, seven o'clock, someplace here.
Yeah, someplace. I have something for you, Tom.
Something for you. Joey said he wanted some cookies.
There is no cookie on his.
Yeah, no, no, I did, I did. He wanted cookies.
Was he usually?
Yeah. Yeah, let me get back to this. So, Ken.
I'm gonna smoke first.
Yeah, please. I think we have the best possible location to move onto. I'm gonna proceed right now.
Oh, boy, okay.
Well, we can talk about the sidewalk.
Oh, we are.
A break is over.
A break, your break is over. You're the one with the T.
Well, I have, they were.
Are you coming?
I don't know, maybe, I don't know. All right, looks like we have new business, and we have, we're talking about Eagle Road.
Fullerton, Eagle Road.
Fullerton, okay.
You guys did the, you wanted to say today?
Today, yes.
Yes.
So isn't it that old auto place?
Gert and King's old place.
Oh, good, oh.
Right on the corner.
I can bring that up.
Across the skylight.
Okay.
Across the street, there's like kind of an active grow, across the, this is a small road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Trying to see where it is.
So he's got, like, a pretty good garage in mind.
Yeah.
That's right, okay.
Can you speak with him?
All right, I got it.
Is this?
Has he still got his?
All right, let's come back to this one, and then we'll do the site, site walk later.
Please.
You can blow it in up, Ken?
It's coming. We're trying. It's too much pressure, I can't take the pressure. Some douche out of pockets.
Didn't know if I should still be doing my homework.
Oh, shit, I should've known, a bird. I should've known it was a muskrat.
Yeah.
Right. There's garden, Eagle Road's off a garden.
Does it go all the way through to Peacock?
There is a gate.
Yeah, but there's a gate.
What's the address, Tyler?
63.
So currently, there's a manufactured home on the site within the setbacks.
It's a little lot.
This is the end of it on this site here. It's all concrete paving through there. That's where the neighbors are very similar. So it's all paving. They did a 30% a few years ago, which was basically the garage and I think the roof over the trailer, maybe 15 years ago.
So they went up, or they just covered the existing?
Yeah, I think the front porch was already on there, so.
So 30% has been met for the property?
Previously used, yeah. I think the proposal, and you can speak to it, Tyler, actually would be reducing in the 30% size, so.
Yes. Reducing the 30%, significantly reducing in lock coverage.
So this is the existing house right here, that drops down into this garage in white, and the red would be the proposed new home, with the blue being the outline of the eaves and overhangs. This dotted line is the building envelope that would be allowed from that existing structure, I'm not close to that, so.
And the envelope set up by the setbacks?
Correct. 21 feet, eight inches is the closest point right there. So that runs the contour of the lake as it comes down and comes out and around.
So they're matching the 21.
Right. And the backside there, what does that say going to Eagle Road?
15.4.
15.4?
The other one, the 25.
Oh, for your. Oh, for your.
That's center of road.
Oh, what is the black line? Oh, probably right, this is fifteen point, yeah, 'cause it, the property's, yeah, yeah. Is there gonna be any sort of, um, patio or, I see a couple steps right there going down right in front of where it says concrete, yeah, is there gonna be any sort of patio or?
No, I mean, removing all that, those existing steps down to the water may stay.
Yeah, those are gone, yeah, those are stained, yeah.
They may stay, they're, I mean, technically allowed steps down to the water anywhere, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, but we're bringing. Right now we have about twenty-five hundred square feet of structure and we're coming down to one thousand eight hundred twenty, so significantly decreasing.
What's the plan for those steps, Tyler, to, are they concrete, they're gonna remain concrete, is that what they are?
No, they're just, it's just basically the grade from there down to the water, they're wood.
Okay.
Um, they're older. Is, it might, is nothing in the pictures that shows that?
Uh, I didn't, to be honest with you, I didn't.
I think it might show in one.
And how are they doing on their impervious, uh, surface, twenty percent?
Uh, there's a little. That's what I was just saying.
Did you, you hadn't calculated that, 'cause they're pretty close in on that.
Right now they're at twenty-four point five percent, they're only twenty percent, they got about twenty-five, uh, hundred square feet.
Okay.
Going down to just over eighteen hundred, so almost seven hundred feet.
That's huge, yeah.
Down to seventeen point eight percent.
Point eight percent, yeah.
Why the deep, or why are they going small?
One floor, is it one floor that's going in?
Uh, one floor, yeah.
So this is gonna become a, instead of the manufactured home.
Stick built, single family home.
Gotcha, so, so now it's going to be a more, for better, lack of a better choice of words, permanent home?
I would call it permanent.
Year round?
Year round.
Yeah, it's, so yeah, they'll be there year round, gotcha.
It won't be on wheels.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's much easier when the lot's only fifty feet deep.
Yeah.
And it's something skinny and long, you're not going to be able to.
It could go right or left, we got a, a new septic going in on the other side, so it kinda had to go that direction and.
Well is where? Is that near by the road?
Is that what that, uh? No, they will probably, they'll put a new well in.
Yeah, they don't have, they have a point or something like that?
Currently it's from the lake, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe so, actually.
So a new drilled well, a new septic. Basically the plot, it's, it's within the same range of space, smaller home.
Right, like the, the impervious is going down.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good.
These are steps.
Good thing.
Yeah, there's the picture that you, you needed before, you were looking at the steps. So what, what's, uh, your recommendation, Ken?
On these small lots, there's not a lot of options, um, it's gotta be something skinny and long, like a manufactured home and they're building a, uh, site built.
Any other comments, questions, motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept, uh, Ken's recommendation on this.
Second?
As a possible petition.
Second?
Comments? We just worded that the setbacks are, um, what they were on the plan, no closer than twenty-one.
Twenty-one point four feet, yeah.
And that includes the overhangs, right?
And that the impervious surface be reduced by the amount, amount indicated.
Yeah.
Technically it can go to twenty percent, correct?
Mm-hmm, and then we'll have the vegetation planned for the, um, existing areas to be re-vegetated.
Uh, I think Leslie? Are they all in favor? Good.
Five hundred did I?
That gave me the all.
Good anyways.
Which way did the pitch?
You sure you don't wanna do the next one? Now we're heading for Loon Pond.
That's a funny way, we usually get ones that have already done that thirty percent.
Right, and they're getting it back.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So at that point, when you reduce and you have a balance, you've got twenty-four months to use it up. If you don't use it within the twenty-four months, then it disappears.
They don't have a whole lot of room to be able to do anything.
No, no.
But they can put up a little shed or something.
You'd have to be attached.
Higher?
Have to be attached, yeah.
I mean, that one.
That has to be attached.
If you're not putting dormers on and things like that now, then you'll probably end up, you know, not using it anymore.
Right. Yeah, well, the next guy, the next person coming, who's buying it?
Yeah, never know they turn around quick sometimes.
Yep. So this one is one eighty-four East Shore Drive, currently there's a manufactured home in this area here, they wanna get rid of the manufactured home and build a shed. The shed will meet the fifty-foot setback and then it's kinda hard to measure it right now, um, so the balance would just be whatever it is here.
That's 'cause it's snow or something, or the pitch, or what?
The pitch and the trees and the stuff in the way, the trailer in the way. So the main concern would be that it's going to be, um. There's actually two dwellings on this lot, there's currently the house. That's from the lakeside, the trailer is just over on this side, manufactured home. And then the trailer. So she's, wants to get rid of this, get it off the property and put a shed, basically the shed would kind of be in this area here, 'cause this is within the setback from the street.
And then do what with the new house?
Uh, they're just gonna renovate the existing house.
Okay, so that's an issue for us.
So that's trailer. No.
So all we're doing is the.
Trailer to a shed.
So again, we're getting smaller.
Yep.
And getting further away from.
Yep.
The lake.
And get rid of a potential dwelling unit.
In the sideline, yeah.
And the inside.
Yeah, we're ten feet off the sideline now, yeah.
No plumbing or anything like that?
No.
That's all of it, the, uh, the septic and the, uh?
Well, if it's not a dwelling unit, I didn't look at it as far as, um.
Was the camper thing attached, attached to the septic?
The house?
The, um.
Uh, the, the.
The green.
Manufactured home?
Yeah.
I never got into there, we've had problems with the septic out there in years past, but they're proposing to put a new septic in anyways for the house. Uh, we've got a new buyer there and she's going through a finance company and the finance company is looking at, um, basically get rid of the trailer, put a new septic in, there's some retaining wall work that she'd also be doing as well. So really, no issues with the house here, they're gonna do some renovations to it, it would be get rid of the manufactured home and put a shed in.
Make a motion, we accept Ken's recommendation?
Second.
That's good, you add that in. Any other comments, then, on motion? Was it, yeah, was the second, all that, all in favor? Yes, we are. All right, I don't think there's any more BPLs, right?
No, stand.
Okay, so I wanna go back for a minute about the garage and just, uh, show the picture, do you have a picture? Leslie and I and Ken went down today, um, we met Rick, um, guy's been there for three years, young guy, um, he's been working, worked for dealership for a number of years. He's now working for a company in Scarborough, which I really don't know, Cumming, was it Cummings?
Cummings.
Cummings, anyway. So anyway, he wants to do this as a sideline. He wants to be able to open a garage and to, uh, supplement his income. And so therefore, perhaps if you had a chance to look at his, his proposal, I think that was made available to all of us, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
And, and we saw that he had lots of hours, um, you know, that may or may not be an issue for us, but there's, the idea is not necessarily he's, is he going to be working all those hours? He, uh, he is, um, I don't know what time he actually works, but he leaves the house, he said that before six. And, uh, gets back whenever and then he plans to have cars come in periodically to be worked up. He wants to get his license for, um, the state stickers, inspection stickers. We, we, uh, looked at the property, there appears to be two neighbors that are close by, um, that he's agreed to touch base with, uh, before we get to a public hearing. And, um.
Seems like a good vegetated buffer between them and the neighbors.
Yes, uh, other than the winter, you wouldn't even see the house, I don't believe.
Two hundred feet, three hundred feet.
And, and it was a pit, and some of you guys may even remember that, I, I'm not here for any of that, but there was a pit there many years ago that has got some growth in it. Lot of trees gathered. But, but, uh, you know, I'm not sure it was vegetated per se, I think it was just kind of.
Came back.
Grew, grew out of it.
Yeah.
Um, let me think, what else, oh, we, we, he, uh, he agreed to close the doors and turn on the compressor and that sound was minimal. Um, then he did, he, what else did he turn on?
Air, air tool.
Okay, air tools in the back, and you could hear it, no doubt about it, you could hear it, um, whether you're gonna hear it two hundred feet away, I don't know. There's a hill behind the, the garage, so sound's gonna bounce off the hill to some degree anyway. What else did I write down, another quick, hard time mark, and destruction. Oh, yes, he has, is that lean-to kind of thing, I'll lean-to, storage area, oh, covered storage area in the back, is that, is that something that can easily be put there?
Yeah, yeah, he came in and got.
He's got a lot of, uh, a lot of land, as you can see, so the, behind the garage, he's got a covering, um, that's gonna be used as storage, I'm not sure if it's gonna be filled in, to be honest with you. Seems to wanna do the right thing, I will tell you that right up front, he just seems like he wants to do everything in the right way. I'm sure you guys would agree with that too, just, just talking to him. So I, I don't know where to go with this at this point, whether, I mean, is it worth setting up a public hearing?
I would say, um, we've got a full survey for the property, he's got enough acreage, he's given us a scope for it, have a conditional use application. If we're going to, I wouldn't go with the first meeting of the month, go with the second? The seventeenth?
You're really good with that idea? Um, you, you know, you might wanna look at the plan that he has, the proposal that he has, he's talking about having X number of cars around, some registered, some unregistered, you, you know, take a look and see what you think about that idea.
Signage.
Yeah, the signs.
Kind of about the road.
Yeah, some ideas about signs, he'd like to, uh, have included in it. You know, I, I noted from, from my perspective anyway, that he, he had, uh, hours like from twelve to eight, and I was thinking that down the road, if he ever wanted to become, do this on his own, you know, maybe it's worth starting, having the hours starting at eight. You, you know, even though he's not gonna be doing it, but that way at least he doesn't have to come back.
And that's what I tell him, I say, ask for all you want, so you don't have to come back and if you've asked for more than you need and the board cuts you back, at least, you know.
Sure, sure, so anyway, that's something to throw out too, you have to take a look at.
Do we have, um, a record anywhere of like, um, conditions with, like, an Aitkins garage?
Aha, as a matter of fact, right there.
Wow, big office.
When we, we've done.
I have one more.
And Aitkins actually leased out a spot on H Road before he did the active ridge road and back then, we had a lot of concerns about the battery storages. Well, now there's a, a core charge on the battery, so when you buy one, there's a five, ten, twenty dollar charge on them, so those problems have disappeared. The recycling, the oil and the antifreeze is, that's much more aggressive, so a lot of the concerns we had in the past really have been mitigated out with, um, the changing of times.
He has nothing under the fifty-five gallon, uh, tank that he uses for oil, so if that were to decay, that oil now is coming out onto the garage floor.
He said he was getting a, um, pallet for it.
A pallet? The pallet is a spill containment device in it.
Oh.
So if that leaks, it takes fifty-five gallons within that plastic pallet, so that was a really good idea.
I didn't, I thought he was speaking about the one that was coming additionally, I didn't realize he was speaking about the one that he already had.
He's going to now.
Yeah, good.
And just, just any fluids on site are contained, minimum storage, um, usually excessive ties, you wanna get rid of those.
He was critical about that too.
Exactly, it's his house there as well too, so.
What, in the.
And he has, he has kids, so he doesn't wanna make a mess in the property.
In the Aitkins property, there was, uh, some talk about having, um, the company that collected the oils, uh, the fluids, also pick up, um, you know, the, the kitty litter that you use to sprinkle on something.
BDI.
You know, rags that might have oil on them, that kind of thing, and I guess apparently Clean Harbors does that, or was still, was doing that for Aitkin. This company, perhaps we need to check or have somebody check to see if they would, um, be picking that stuff up too.
We would just look for an agreement, a contract he has with somebody for hazardous waste.
And that's exactly what they were saying with Yank one, we had set up, he had to come up with a contract before we, uh, before he was giving a, um, certificate of occupancy. So we might wanna make sure we do that too. So we'll, we'll look for the seventeenth for the public hearing, you're good as far as where you're putting that, although I never see him anywhere, so I'm not looking at the, apparently the right places.
We can do what we do with Chip.
Yeah.
What was that?
Give him all the stuff and he drives around, that's not gonna be his.
Everywhere.
And put the signs up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, thanks.
Ken, can you, um, overlay the Oxford Protection District on this map? Just for kicks, I think it's kinda close to the edge of it. I was looking on my, um, just, you know, ordinance map and it looks like, definitely isn't part of his property, but I wasn't sure how much it was property.
Here's the Aitkins lot.
You can have that, I have another one.
Okay. Okay, now.
Need to use that one to make copies of it.
Okay. Have you, no, we're, we're talking to Ken, let's see if he's.
Off the map, it's a tall.
I thought you came up with the zoning.
There we go, so it is right, it's like number eleven, right, so it does cut through that corner of his property. Oh, we get, yeah, okay, there it is.
What am I looking at, I don't, I don't see it.
There's the garage right there.
There's the, oh, I see, and it's.
So the garage is just on the edge of it. I mean, I was looking at that earlier today, 'cause I didn't go on the site, what I would do the ordinance and I was just thinking maybe we put in something about like, you know, vehicles stored for repair being located outside the Oxford Protection District, I mean, 'cause it would still be.
Right, I remember that.
Easy for him to do that, um, just.
He, right now, he had.
I think he's outside the flood plain, but not to Oxford.
He had one, two, three, four vehicles, two trucks, one of which is an old plow truck, a, a car that he's getting rid of that he took ownership of because somebody didn't pay a bill. And never, never came back for the truck.
Right.
And then he's got a small, uh, for lack of anything, trailer camper, I'm not sure what it was, an ink.
But like a drivable camper.
Horse trailer.
Horse trailer, that was. So, so those would be on that aqua world.
Right.
Where they have some right now, but that doesn't mean, you know, you know, we probably.
Just a thought, just, just 'cause if he's gonna be, you know, storing maybe twenty cars or something.
But that whole area where it says rural.
That's all open.
That's all open.
That's the old gravel pit floor, so, yeah.
Yes, that's all open.
Thanks.
So we just need to, you know, when we get to that point, when we set up the conditions for it, we'll just throw those conditions in. Anything else? What do you think, um, about the idea of the ordinance changes, and I don't mean for, obviously this year, but I mean, do we, do we go forward with thoughts of thinking about some changes in the ordinance for, um, uh, to be ahead of the game? For, for the, uh, the issues with the marijuana, or do we go with, I guess it was richer, people were saying, don't do anything? to be ahead of the game for, for the, uh, the issues with marijuana, or do we go with, I guess it was Richard who was saying, don't do anything, just sit back and wait and see what the state does? What's your thoughts?
Well, I was thinking about the commercial districts we have set up, if we would wanna try to curtail activities into those districts, but then you're just gonna have random owners who already have properties in other parts of the town and, and that's their business potentially, so it's like, would it even be that beneficial to try and force this sort of development into the commercial district if it was to occur, I couldn't.
Mm-hmm.
Find much benefit in doing that, but.
But if you read, if you read the report, I mean, and, and I went through and read it this afternoon, um, they were, the, the whole committee recommended that you, um, only allow grows in a dedicated building, you know, not, not, you know, someone, you know, a house that they converted, but it has to be like a specifically built, building. You know, so certain things like that, I mean, it's, I think we should, we should all read the report.
Right.
And.
Did you get a copy from Brenda, Brenda's got those, or?
They're online, I can, I'll turn it off for you, but Gavin.
Okay, yeah.
The twenty page.
Because there was, there was a lot of information, a lot of things to think about, um, and I could see going both ways, you know, I could see where it would be.
Use the projector upstairs.
It's important to be ready in case, you know, push beams to shut, but also not to waste too much time either, because.
Right.
It takes a lot of time to, to do an ordinance.
But, I mean, could we deal with what Yoli was saying, could we make sure that we're correct in what we wanna do as far as signage? Could we, are we, I mean, there is an odor section in the ordinance.
There is an odor section.
Yes.
So, so we need, we could perhaps look at that to see if.
Right.
That's what we wanna do. Um, those two seem to be issues.
And see odor.
Five, eleven, twenty-one.
You know, whether, whether or not they are something we wanna, you know, change or whatever next year, um.
So, just make a generic change, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, something that we, in our, in our.
That, that geared toward this law, like, just.
Maybe, yeah, maybe, yeah. Without per se saying it, because we don't even know what is gonna come down, but, and maybe we're already covered. I mean, how do you feel about the signs, uh, ordinance part, uh, Ken?
The sign ordinance needs a lot of work for what we have now.
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't care about the rest of it, 'cause you gotta watch your signs, you can't regulate what it says, but you can regulate the size.
Mm-hmm.
You can't, um, you know.
You can't regulate what a sign says? Really?
First amendment.
But if it's like an obscenity or something, you wouldn't be asked to take, take it down.
You can ask, but you're not supposed to, so that, that, there was a case in Arizona, made it all the way up, which changed everything nationally, so our ordinance is not in compliance with, well, Supreme Court.
A few good parts to look at, huh?
So, so, wow. What was the deal over in Chapley, remember, remember in Chapley when they, uh?
The dry town.
Yeah, and they were battling the selectmen about that, one specific select person. I mean, there were a lot of nasty things that were up there, and maybe you're right, maybe they continue to be up there.
That was even before the case, the case was just two years ago, so I definitely know us, our ordinance is prohibiting, or it allows some agricultural use. I forget how it's worded, but I know we have a issue with our ordinance.
Alright, and, and you, but you can control, let's say, the types of signs, like electronic signs.
Yep, no flashing, no blinking.
Alright.
The size of it, probably the color of it.
So, maybe that is something we put on the, uh, our agenda next, uh, winter and try to.
Sign ordinance.
Work, work on that a little bit, even, just because it's, it's weak.
Mm-hmm.
In general, um. Anyway, I just throw it out there to see, uh, what anybody kind of, uh, thinks. Anything else? You got anything with that?
No.
We're done, adjourned? All in favor?
Early than I thought.
We go. Thanks, Virginia.